You saw the picture of my baby parrots. They're the ugliest creatures on the planet and you can see the dinosaurs.
Yeah.
That's really sweet, thank you.
So just, uh, really, if you're chair, I'm gonna need to put Karen live at the first, and I'll do Paige second.
No.
It's not muted.
A stone, next time. We'll go ahead and open the meeting at this time for the work session. Indicates discussion reports, departmental concerns, non-action items, so we will go ahead and proceed with that. Before that, anyone to offer an opening prayer? Young lady in the second seat.
Good morning to each and every one of you. My name is LJ, it's Linda Jim. I'm originally from Comwash and I reside in Eagle Mountain right now. And I came down for this meeting, so I want to say good morning to each and every one of you in a good way. So I'm just gonna offer for guidance, good health, happiness that we all want for each and every one of us. [speaking Spanish] [speaking Spanish] [speaking Spanish] San Juan County Commissioner. [speaking Spanish] 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 Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for the opening prayer and, uh, looking at the agenda, we have, uh... Can't see, last my glasses.
Karen.
Karen, sure. Uh, you will be first on the block.
Thank you so much.
Karen, before you start, I just want everyone to know, we are live streaming it and the mic is extremely sensitive, so if you're talking to your neighbors, it'll probably hear it, so, um, please, in your audience, be quiet because you're gonna be picked up on live.
That's good.
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioners, I am not going to go over what is in these packets because you can read and I highly recommend that you read the first two pages. You will know everything you need to know about CCP. On the third page is a list of all the current partners in CCP. But what I would rather do today is talk to you very spontaneously about the engine that started CCP. When I was a kid, I was paralyzed and hospitalized for two months with polio, so I had to learn how to use my brain instead of my body. And when I was in my twenties, I worked for the Civil Rights Division of the Arizona Department of Law and I had a grant and I worked as the Director of Indian Affirmative Action. So I know these lands. I traveled to all sixteen reservations then in Arizona. My job was to discover if there were any false hiring practices by white companies on reservation lands and I found them. What I found was that there were false height and weight requirements to jobs to work in the mines which excluded vast quantities of the Navajo population and these height and weight requirements had nothing to do with the ability to perform the job. So I filed charges against these companies with EEOC in Washington DC and I wrote a book, well, it was a manual, called Indian Employment and the Law. So that's the engine that drives all of this. Fast forward twenty years, the Canyon Country Partnership was created to help mitigate re- uh, rez- uh, recreation impacts that were happening in the Moab area and San Juan County Carbon and Emery were involved, plus eleven state agencies, plus the federal agencies and everybody was traveling to Moab quarterly to listen to Moab concerns. And after a year, everybody started wondering, well, why are we doing this? This is Moab and this is not Monticello or Blanding or Emery County or Carbon County. So the partnership was completely falling apart. They hired me for my lack of opinionism and lack of politicizing everything. And what I did is I rebuilt this partnership from the ground up. We moved the meetings to every single one of the four counties that were involved. We moved them up to every other month. We created an environment where the commissioners who showed up and the state agencies, these are regional managers and sometimes state directors and the federal regional managers would all come together every other month, have a round robin where they told each other and tell each other what's going on in their agencies and what's coming down the pipe and get help from each other. My heart is about connecting people. And what I want to know from you is what your issues are and what your priorities are so that I can help connect you up with the appropriate people. For example, I didn't have to be school board president for eight years to know that roads are key to education. And if your roads don't get your school buses to the schools, guess what? There's no education. My husband drives the school bus for Castle Valley, so he knows firsthand how important this is. So, the head of UDOT for the whole southern area, as far as Utah can help you, is Dan Hinckley. Let me get him connected up with you and he'll also be at the CCP meetings. But even better, let's go straight to Romney. Kelsey Berg is Romney's Chief of Staff in Washington. She's coming to Utah and will be at the April twenty-fifth CCP meeting. She, um, is a personal friend and can help just move things along. One of the other benefits of CCP is that I cook. I make a hot lunch. And this is free. I donate. I'm, I'm into donation. I donate all food, I donate all the meals. I have continental breakfasts and I have a hot lunch every time. I know that you are meeting with congressional reps this Thursday and probably won't be able to come. The congressional reps will be at the CCP meetings on April twenty-fifth. A list of those meetings is in the very back page of that thing that I handed you, so, so that you have that. Um, but there's one other benefit that I want to offer you and only you. I know how far you have to travel to get to CCP meetings. Now, back to that polio stuff, for twenty-eight years I had to climb thirteen steps to our kitchen. My husband has just finished building a very small, single-story house right next to the pond. It has for you to stay the night before CCP to get you at least halfway to some of these meetings in Carbon and Emery and Grand County. It has a wonderful bedroom, bathroom, and a pond room that looks out over the pond and I am offering that to you to stay the night before CCP and I will feed you. And if you're exhausted from all these meetings, you can just sit in the pond room and enjoy a few hours of solitude and I won't bother you. Um, so that's really important to me. A couple of things, we have our October twenty-fourth meeting in San Juan County and you get to decide where that's gonna be and what you want to showcase. Usually we meet at the hideout or we meet at edge of the cedars, but we met at Hoven Week, um, a year and a half ago. So you tell me where you want to meet and we will showcase that. After a lot of these meetings, we have field trips that, that show off projects. Um, on the twenty-fifth field, bring, by the way, on that offer to spend the night at my house and get fed, bring your wife. Several hours of Dead Horse Point won't be a bad experience. Another thing, I need to give you a heads up that at your eleven o'clock meeting, there will be a delegation coming from South Spanish Valley. These are not the people you talk to at Pat Creek. This is another thing. So just heads up, that's gonna be happening. CCP, one last note, creates itself. It wasn't enough for me to get all these land managers and county commissioners together. There had to be implicated a real sense of goodwill. And so, for the first little while, I was basically a stand-up comic. And now, there is an atmosphere in the room of CCP of great relaxed networking, informality, good food, and wonderful relationships. And I'm so proud, we are in our twenty-fifth year and I'm in my twenty-fourth year of CCP. So, I wish you could come day after tomorrow, um, it's in price at DNR. But definitely plan on April twenty-fifth and the subsequent dates. One thing, just to show you, I already told you that our current members on page three, page four and five are the charter and ground rules. Um, this page has three pages of all the field trips we've gone on, they're optional, and all the presentations that we've done. And the last page is to the two-hundred-and-sixty-one people who have come from dues-paying agencies to our meetings over the last twenty-five years. Last page, the meetings themselves. Here's just- Here's just a reminder of the offer for overnight accommodations. And a nice warm meal and time by the pond. And then, what will become for you, literally, the best meeting you will attend to ever, and that's not because of me. It's because of all the people who attend and the relationships they've built over the years. Any questions?
Karen, what, what are some of the other things that we've showcased in San Juan County, so that maybe the commissioners know, so we don't duplicate?
Oh, wonderful, well, for one thing, well, we did Hoven Week a year and a half ago. We do Edge of the Cedars frequently with tours of the backroom collections, now, that's pretty mighty. We have gone on abandoned mine re- reclamation trips to see the award-winning, uh, things they put up so the bats can get in and out. We've had boat trips on Lake Powell, we have gone down the San Juan River, is my personal favorite, three times. And on some of these that are all-day meetings, we, we just have the meetings on the boat, and never mind the, you know, the, the meeting room. We've gone to the hideout, we've allowed members to play golf, if they get there at seven AM before the meeting starts at nine. Meetings are always nine to one, and the field trips go afterwards. Um, those are just some of, Comwash, oh, we went all the way down Comwash to the river. On the river, we saw the, the ruins and the wa- and the rock there. All of CCP would be absolutely delighted to do any of these things again, they're wonderful.
Maybe, sorry, real quick, the next few que- meetings, the dates again?
Yes, the dates are, oh, by the way, I'm, this needs to be attended to. The dates are in the back, oh, I am so sorry, for some reason. Here you go, this is the thing that meant to go in yours. The dates are, next dates, March twenty-first, dead, uh, DNR office in Price, there you go. Um, April twenty-fifth, Dead Horse Point, June twenty-seventh, Orangeville Community Center, that's the old firehouse that they rehabbed up there. And on that one, we're doing a field trip to see the, that awful Trail Mountain Fire that happened last year. We're gonna actually go up near there and see the damage, but see the rehab efforts that are going on, and hear from Forestry Fire and State Lands and the Forest Service, what they can do when there's a fire. To rehab the areas. On August twenty-second, the River History Museum in Green River, we are contemplating a boat trip from Nepratiti to Swayze's. Um, we'll see if that can happen. Um, your meeting here is October twenty-fourth. And then in December fifth, we're in Moab at the Grand Center, and that's a big holiday bash where I pull out all the stops. Um, the last thing I should say to you about CCP is that because we have changed to a communication and networking organization. You are free to invite who you want to CCP, but the public and the press especially are not issued invitations. This is a relaxed meeting wherein no financial decision-making takes place. So we do not have to have a room full of gobs of people, besides, we have twenty-five to thirty CCP members usually showing at the meeting, and our venues are small. So it is, it's very relaxed and formal, and you really get to know these land and resource managers and your fellow county people. Any other questions? Please show up, and Bruce, Bruce, I know you have AOG, right?
Yeah.
Um, en route up there, 'cause AOG starts at one, and it's usually in Price. Wherever we are, stop off at twelve noon for lunch. You're always welcome.
We have a revolving loan, loan fund board that meets about lunchtime in, in Price, so it's, it's a little bit hard to.
I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry. Well, if for any reason there's, is, um, if you can come on, say, that first, uh, Thursday in December. Or the reason why we moved the February meeting to March twenty-first is to get the legislature done, and we'll be having legislative, legislative updates. So if you can attend one of those two meetings, please feel free to do so. Uh, really, we look forward, and again, wanna remind you, free accommodations.
I believe we, uh, also have a engage, engagement with Mr. Curtis on the twenty-first.
I know.
So that will be conflict.
That is a conflict, yes. That is a conflict, but on the, on the twenty-fifth, hopefully, there'll be no more conflicts, you can put these dates in your calendars. And, um, I will look forward to seeing you. And again, I wanna reiterate, I wanna know what your issues and your concerns and priorities are, and we can do that over dinner the night before. In the, the suite that will be yours. And you'll get to see my baby parents.
For life? So, be yours for, for life?
Yes, sure, why not?
Great.
Why not? All right, thank you so much, are there any other questions? All right, I thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you to Paige for being gracious enough to let me take her spot.
Next is, um, Paige.
Yeah, we just wanted to come and give some extension updates from the university, we're sorry our director couldn't be here with us today. She wanted to make it, but she had another conflict, so she is hopefully coming to your next meeting. And we'll kind of explain a little bit more what extension is, but we have these pamphlets, this is kinda what goes on in our state, um, extension-wise. My name's Paige Ray, I'm the Extension Agent over the Home and Family. Um, so we had a turnover in our office last year with Karen A, she was our County Director and our Ag Agent. Um, and so we wanted to come and update you, I've been asked to be the County Director, so that means I will be over the budgets, and I will be kind of your first line of contact between the university. And I look forward to doing that position. And then I wanted to introduce Reagan White Solusi, she's our new Ag and Natural Resources and 4H person, and I would let her introduce herself.
Hi, I'm Reagan White Solusi, I originally grew up in, uh, Gallup, New Mexico, and I, uh, have lived in Logan, Utah, going to school. And, um, got my bachelor's degree, and am finishing up my master's degree up there. My research or my thesis focus encompassed, um, Reviving Native American Food Crops, which, uh, encompassed the, uh, wild spinach, or more commonly known as Rocky Mountain beet plant. Um, in Navajo, we call it wa- I hope I kind of tweeted that right. And, um, um, the other food crop is, um, our, uh, southwest peaches that the Navajo and the Pueblo tribes have, uh, been known to grow. And so, I'm finishing up that project, um, this spring, and, uh, right now, I am, uh, signed as the, um, Extension, as an Extension Instructor. But once I get my degree, I'll be promoted to, um, Extension Assistant to BESR, right? Okay, um, and so, I'm pleased to be here, I've lived here, I've worked with, um, USU Eastern Blanding Campus, uh, couples, uh. Couple of years ago, I taught a horticulture class there, um, that's actually my specialty is in horticulture. I know that the Ag Extension Agent for San Juan County has historically been specialized in, um, livestock, and so that's, I have some practice in that. As far as the plant science size, uh, side and the approach for livestock health and nutrition. Um, but other than that, I am probably going to be asking for assistance from outside specialists, or from the previous Ag Extension Agent, um, Jen Kyes, who I'm sure a lot of the community here knows. And so, just bear with me, but I'm pleased to meet you all. Um, a little bit about what I plan to try and do with the county is, uh, to, right now, we're, we're starting to work with water conservation practices. Uh, City of Blanding has approached, uh, Utah State University, and I'm collaborating with that to try and look at some water-wise, um, mechanisms for the, the water infrastructure. And also, just for, uh, community understanding, so we'll be having some workshops, probably, hopefully this summer, on, um, how to conserve water in your gardens. Or approaches that you can take to, um, mitigate the, the drought cycles that we've been having. And that's, that's one topic, um, I know there's some collaboration that can be done with the USU Blanding Campus. Um, they have been wanting to involve inste- Extension in a lot of their programs and start creating and building programs, so. We may be starting to look at community gardens, and so if there's anything of interest, I'm here to assist at your guys' needs of, um, anything with agriculture, natural resources on both end. Um, right now, I think, I think that's probably just a little bit of an idea of what, um, I'm hoping to do with the county. As far as, um, County Commissioners, I was wondering, is there any kind of, um, kind of task that you would like to see addressed? Or anything that you would like to see start occurring in the county?
Bruce?
Not that I can think of right offhand, they do a good job. Do a really good job.
Well.
Well, the, um, Nansan Community, Navajo Man, um, is developing a, um, community water system. And, uh, we are trying to, uh, uh. In fact, uh, we're at a meeting with, uh, BOR tomorrow in Provo. And, uh, I'm including some ideas on family gardening plots and so forth. How to, uh, utilize the, uh, you, the water that's gonna be, uh, systems gonna be improved, so. Those are some of the ideas that I have. Other than that, is also, um, water to be available for livestock and so forth.
Okay, yeah, we, um, can definitely try and accommodate that, I think, um, improving the infrastructure for the Navajo communities, especially, um, especially in that, in the Navajo mountain area, I think is, is important. Um, I have worked there as part of my research with, uh, peach crop and, uh, a family down near the mountain there. And, um, I've kinda seen some of the old infrastructure that they have there that was probably established, I, I believe in the sixties, just with piping natural spring water and stuff. So, I've always been interested in, um, looking for sustainability and, um, and trying to improve and utilize the natural water systems. Um, for the benefit of, of our, of us and for agriculture in any way that it can. So, um, if you, uh, please contact me, and I'd love to be of assistance and provide some of my knowledge and support.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Your name again?
Reagan.
Is it down here?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think it's on.
Number and everything. Thank you very much, uh, next would be, uh, Madeline Randall, Economic Development. Good morning.
Good morning. How's it going?
Good.
Um, so I just wanted to come and provide an update on a few things that are going on. Um, the primary thing, I think that's the most important, Bruce is staring at my ski tan.
You had a fun day, or fun weekend, didn't you?
At Wyatt Mesa, UETN is holding a, um, public meeting, um, to talk about the broadband projects. I'm gonna send it through email, um, but I just wanted to provide a reminder as well. It would be great if we could have some San Juan County Commission presence, I think, Lily, is that the area that you're over? Or is that Kenneth, I couldn't, I didn't find that.
District two.
That's District two, okay. Um, that meeting's March twenty-third, so this Saturday at eleven AM, um, and it's really to discuss right-of-way through Wyatt Mesa. To have the project continue on down to Bluff and Monazuma Creek. Um, it sounds like there's a little bit of, um, community pushback, and part of that is just not understanding what fiber will allow for the communities. So, if we could have any county representation there, that would be great. Let's see, the enterprise zone that we brought to, I believe it was the last commission meeting that was approved by the state. Um, so, we did an overlay over the entire county, each city is required to establish their own enterprise zone, so the county enterprise zone doesn't include Bluff, Blanding, or Monticello. But each of those cities, um, are supposed to apply for enterprise zones, so our office is assisting those cities in, in that application process as well. Um, before, we, our enterprise zone only covered really the northern section of the county, so, and then a piece of Bluff as well, so we just overlaid the entire county. Um, for this new renewal of the zone. Um, just a reminder about Congressman Curtis's visit, um, he'll be in Spanish Valley in the morning from eight to nine. Um, the, then he has some flyover trips, I think, I'm not sure about his schedule in between that, and then, the next thing is the dinner with the commissioners at five-thirty at Duke's. Um, just to make sure that's on both of your calendars. Um, and then, there's a Bluff Town Hall meeting, um, for the public to attend from seven to eight-thirty PM. And that's all on March twenty-first, so this Thursday. And then, March twenty-second, he'll be going to the Mexican Water Chapter from ten AM to eleven-thirty AM for another public meeting as well. And then, I just wanted to do just an overall update of our office too, I don't think I've, I've done one recently. Um, just a reminder of our strategic plan, um, we have a few key areas that we focus on, broadband infrastructure, business expansion and retention, diversific- and diversification of the workforce. Um, with broadband, we kind of talked about the Mexican Water section, oh, sorry, the Wyatt Mesa section already in that meeting that's coming up. Um, there's two other updates as far as right-of-ways right now with UETN. Um, one is they're going through a Navajo ARC survey, um, and that's been completed, and it's been reviewed by the tribe. And they're just waiting on that final process to continue Phase One, which will go into Monazuma Creek. Um, and the second right-of-way that they're waiting on is with the BLM office, um, and they are currently, um, waiting on another ARC survey, um, for that as well. And so, both of those processes are moving forward, UETN, and they have a contractor, um, that's helping with all of the right-of-ways, has asked if any of those processes start to slow down or get bogged up. If we can provide some support from the Commission, right now, we don't, we don't need that, because they seem to be moving forward, but in the future, if, if that process gets delayed, they've requested some help.
Isn't the fiber going, uh, in the highway right-of-way?
It is, so that was the interesting thing that they said.
So how come we have to do an ARC study again?
So, UDOT approved the work, but BLM, I guess, has to approve it over them as well.
Hmm. I, I would think they did an ARC study to put the highway right-of-way through.
So we did clear.
So it might be a conversation then to have one of you or two of you touch base with.
An agreement. Utilization agreement. Or dual utilization agreement.
That was my question on the issue with Wyatt Mesa too, is it going just through the UDOT right-of-way and why, why it does?
That's the interesting thing with Wyatt Mesa that's hard, is there's two different methods to do fiber, you can do it by boring into the ground, or you can do it aerial. Wyatt Mesa is all aerial, so they're using existing poles as well, so there's no impact on any of the, any of the allotments or anything. Um, but they still need the allotment's approval, and so that's something I think maybe if, if we could have Commission representation down there to help explain, that at the Wyatt Mesa meeting, um, would be really helpful. Because there, it sounds like it's just dependent on a couple allotments, and that would hold up the Phase One project for fiber.
So they might have aerospace, right?
Yeah, I, that's what I don't know, I'm not sure how all of those allotments work. But it's, um, it's.
We don't know, then how can we help?
Well.
So that's.
That's why going and attending that.
It's gonna be the problem, add into the problem.
And that.
If we know exactly what, uh, the problem is, uh, maybe it's just. Understanding, misunderstanding.
And that's where I think, like what I said earlier. And that's where I think, like what I said earlier, I think a large part of it is just a misunderstanding of what fiber and broadband is and the impact it could have on the community. Um the allottees that are pushing against the fiber project, it sounds like a big part of it is they don't want the fiber because they feel like that's just another place for their kids to go to the library or wherever and play video games or get online and kind of mess around. But there's a greater impact, I think, and education that can come with that is fiber provides opportunities as well. For jobs, for economic development, for schools, for students. Um and in that twenty-third meeting on Saturday, that's part of the education, I think, that that needs to happen. Um but I think it's important to have some county representation there, just to show that the county is in support of of the project.
Do you want me to see if Commissioner Mayor Boye can attend that or?
Yeah, I would, 'cause I have uh already scheduled on the twenty-third.
Uh it might, I I I wasn't sure when it might be a good time to update the commissioners on the legislative process on broadband, but.
It passed, so it's a.
Yeah, the the process is is this, when you seek an appropriations request from the legislature, um you need a sponsor and um U E N has been the sponsor for broadband throughout the state. And they had the San Juan County project as number two on their list. When they went to the Appropriations Committee, uh the Appropriations Committee ranked this project much lower than second, it was down as far as even fourteenth at one time. And so um it's my feeling again that, and I speak in terms of farming and ranching, we're at the end of the irrigation ditch, we're not at the head in the state of Utah. The head of the irrigation ditch is in Salt Lake City, so they receive the most attention. San Juan County's at the at the end and sometimes the water doesn't get all the way down the ditch to San Juan County. And we don't get a lot of attention or appropriations. But um talking to um Ray Timothy, the executive director, the last couple of days of the legislature, he was pretty concerned about the uh about the uh about the project and the money being appropriated through the legislature. And I'll tell you why it was so important that the money get appropriated by the legislature. When you have a project like broadband that has a federal component to it, there was a nine-to-one match by the federal government. So they have, they were asking for one point one million dollars from the legislature. The match from the federal government was nine point nine million. If we could get the one point one from the legislature, making a total project of eleven million dollars for the phase that takes um the broadband from um uh Bluff into uh into Navajo Mountain. So um I was talking to a couple of the commissioners who were pretty active in the legislative process. And one of them, Commissioner Whitney from Beaver, told me he had a meeting with um Evan Vickers, who is on executives' approaches uh that day, and asked me if I'd like to go with him. And so I went with him and I explained to him that the one point one million dollars was important because it had a n- a nine-to-one match from the federal government. And even though the committees submit their proposals to the Executive Appropriation Committee, which is usually leadership, um I wanted him to understand how important it was that that we got this one point one for San Juan County 'cause it really takes the fiber all the way to Navajo Mountain. Um he said he understood and he would, he would try to help us as much as he could. And we got back with him a couple of days later and and all he would tell us is, don't worry about it. And um Mark Whitney said, when a, when somebody on the executives' approaches tells you, don't worry about it, don't bother anymore from the legislature. And now we will, we'll get the match from the federal government and can take fiber. If we can get through White Mesa, Willie, it'll, it'll, there's a, a, the money's there to take it all the way out to Navajo Mountain, which I thought was pretty significant. It was really the most significant piece of legislation for San Juan County that went through the legislature, in my opinion.
And so it's really that, what Bruce was talking about, this two-phase project. So phase one has been approved and that's blending down through Bluff and Monizuma Creek. And then phase two is that Bluff all the way down to Navajo Mountain.
But we didn't have the money appropriated for it, so.
We didn't have phase two before, yeah.
So that's why that process was so important, to get the money appropriated so that once the right-of-way clearance comes, we can take it all the way to to Navajo Mountain. And really, if you're not connected in this day and age and in this world, that you're, you're behind. So we felt it was important to get that done.
Um off of broadband, I think that was important, just within the office as well is, there's a couple initiatives that have come out. So one is the Rural Online Initiative that came out of legislation last year. Um and it's something that the county jumped on board with and we had two town halls. We want to have more, but we don't have the capabilities with the speed of our fiber right now. So the two town halls we had were in Monticello and Blanding. Um and we'll hopefully continue those down into the other communities as as we get the fiber and the resources and infrastructure down there. But the Rural Online Initiative is a really interesting one because um it it starts to get people that are interested in remote work. Um and then it also helps them with the training on the backend as well. Um so that's something that um Andy has taken the lead, our business coordinator in our office, for that. Um and he led those two town halls. Um another broadband update as well is um with with Indigo. And this is on the secondary, secondary level education with the high schools. Um they've been working with White Horse High School um to develop a business entrepreneurial program. Um and they have twenty students that'll be graduating this upcoming year in the program and being absorbed into both our Business Resource Center in the county and then also our Business Coordinator Office to help these businesses expand into um and continue on into the workforce. And so that's kind of an exciting initiative that's been moving forward. Um a lot of that also is dependent on future fiber projects as well because they're looking at virtual reality, they're looking at um A I work and and different things along that as well. So that's a really cool initiative that's coming out. Um.
My concern is uh these types of developments that are going on and these uh legislation, state, county and whatnot, always uh limited to jurisdiction. And beyond that, the need still exists. Just like uh Mr. Addit says, very little water or none gets to San Juan County. The same way with service, other services. Uh very, barely trickles down, if any. And one of the biggest reason is the jurisdiction. We have communities that are situated in by-state, tri-counties. And those are some of the, the problems that we face. How are these addressed through your programs? Are they even mentioned? Or they're cross state lines, county lines being proposed for some type of the agreement that could lend some of these or eliminate some of these problems to provide opportunities across county lines, state lines?
For broadband specifically with fiber um and infrastructure there, one of the key things is with the U E T N. If we can get them to put in the main infrastructure into all of the high schools, we're then working with private companies like Emery Telecom to then expand into those other communities. The hard thing with U E T N is it just goes to the schools and it doesn't go to the homes. That's what we noticed, I mean, just for example, in Monticello, it didn't expand into each of the homes and to the businesses off of this main stretch. And so that's where it's working with those private companies to then expand the network. Once the fiber line is there on the main stretch, then we can start looking to explore expanding it into those communities a little bit more. Um regard to cross state lines, um we've, we've worked a little bit with trying to develop relationships. Um there is a couple meetings that, or a few meetings that I went to when I first started that were down in uh Mexican Water Chapter. And it was when they were working with N A U and A S U on some feasibility studies in the region. And Martha's been moving forward with those feasibility studies. Initially, there were all of the Utah chapters and some Arizona um chapters that were on board. And then gradually, just the Utah chapters were the only ones invested. And then even some of those started to drop off as well. Um and so she's kind, she's been taking the lead on that, but um is it Apache County that's over the Arizona there?
There are Cucanino County, Apache County, Navajo County, those four counties.
That are.
Goes up to the state line.
So Apache County, we tried to start working on some just initial preliminary discussions. But we've found too is we need, we need it just within our county as well too. So that's kind of, this initial phase is trying to get our county to a baseline into the baseline of infrastructure needs. And then in the process, also trying to develop some relationships across county lines as well. It does get hard though, you're right, with jurisdiction, because everyone has different regulations and everyone has different state programs and it's almost like having to learn. We're starting to just understand all of the Utah state programs, but then we're trying to delve into what does Arizona offer? What does Colorado offer?
We are, as I learned, uh working with the seven county infrastructure, they have uh this plan also.
Correct, they.
And in addition to that, I posed the question as to what Navajo Tribal Utility Authority is uh doing in terms of coordination. And they indicated that they are working with the tribal programs. Why isn't county doing the same thing?
That's again, I, we've had the seven county coalition, that's been a meeting that's attended by the commissioners in the past. Um so I've attended a couple of those when they invited economic development directors. And we started those conversations, but it's been really more so on, on the commission to take the lead with some of those initial meetings and then us following through. But I can definitely continue to develop those relationships.
The other thing is what you mentioned, that it's a very limited uh scope as to the application. It's not gonna involve residential communities where it's, the importance of it is there for emergency.
Correct.
But this is only gonna trickle down to the school county, San Juan County School District. And it's gonna be, we just right next door to that uh establishment down at Navajo Mountain outside. Oh, services not gonna be provided to that community school. It's just next door.
And maybe do, were you proud of that process? I think the community schools are also a part of the U E T N project as well. I don't think that they're, the community schools, I don't.
I don't think so. And I was trying to get them to understand that these are, not only the community school, we have the Utah Health Center. You have um Navajo Head Start and Community. And probably anticipating a business establishment there too. So those are ineligible to receive those fiber opti- opportunities.
Are the community schools B I A, that's under B I A?
It's a grand school, yes.
So they will be because U E T N started conversations, at least in Monizuma Creek. And so we haven't gotten down to that second phase that includes Navajo Mountain. Um but I think Monizuma Creek can be an example of what's going to happen within the community schools as well. Um but Jeff, that came to the two meetings, I think it was two commission meetings ago that presented for U E T N, he's reaching out to B I A to coordinate infrastructure in those community schools as well.
Yeah, the other thing is the Utah Navajo Health System is six thirty-eight federal public Indian health grant. So it's a government program also.
Um maybe it's another conversation we can have further outside of commission meeting. I feel like I'm taking up a lot of your work, meaning time hard. But I think we can definitely talk more about what relationships, resources.
Combine those and and uh give it a one, one stone through and uh cure up the disconnect.
Um the last thing I just wanted to mention as well um is the Community Reinvestment Agency. We keep bumping that back on commission meetings, but we'll be bringing it to the April second commission meeting for review. Um there's two projects to um for the agency to review and then approve for interlocal. Um there's one in Blanding and then there's one in Bluff. Um but that's another, that's just something else to be aware of that's coming through as well. That's all I think I have for you.
Thank you.
Willie, can I ask where Kenneth is?
He's sick today.
He's sick?
Next, uh McNeely.
He he's, he's sick as well, so he's not making it.
Nick Sandberg. He's not sick.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I wanna give you an update on the Forest Plan. It's still, still going forward, of course. There was a, an interdisciplinary team meeting last Thursday in Price. And I didn't attend in person, but I called in and attended by phone. So on this plan, the Forest Service is still working on the desired conditions, the objectives and the standards and guidelines that will be the basic basis for this plan. And this, they're doing in preparation for a scoping period which will come out sometime this fall. Uh so work is basically just continuing on with uh the foundation documents for this plan. Now, there is a webinar this Thursday at one P M and that's for the cooperating agencies. Periodically, the Forest Service has these webinars for cooperating agencies and we always participate with that. So I will, I will uh attend that Thursday meeting online. As far as the Bear's Ear's Monument Plan goes, the agencies, at least as of now, are still working towards a mid-April release date for the proposed plan and the final E I S. And that would begin a thirty-day protest period. And as far as the Advisory Committee, that twelve or fifteen-member board, those names and the status of that committee is still in the Washington office, the hands of policymakers there. So the local, local agencies don't know any more than that about that particular committee. The hands of policymakers there, so the local, local agencies don't know any more than that about that particular committee. Now, in the past, we've held periodic coordination meetings with the federal agencies, the B L M and the Forest Service. We generally held those about every two months, and the last one we held was in February of twenty eighteen. And we got to the point where we thought those meetings were more of a, a format for the agency to tell us, the county, what had already happened. Rather than asking for our input to projects that were currently being planned or developed. So I guess I just put this before the commission. Do you wanna start these coordination meetings again, or would you rather have a? An agency representative drop into the commission meetings as needed, or a combination? Maybe, excuse me, of those two. So it's something to think about, and if you want to have the meetings again, well, I'll set those up. But as I say, you may prefer just to have a representative of the agency come into a work meeting or a commission meeting and. And get input or let us know what's going on at that time too. So, so if you do wanna have a meeting, well, let me know, I'm gonna set those up. And that's all I have for you this morning.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
I I think it would be good to give Nick direction on, do we wanna hold those coordination meetings still?
Maybe an update, to to me, an update. We don't know, we're not. That much, although we need, it's an update. So what's going on?
So you would like to have a, a meeting as an update type?
I think we should do, I think we should have, I don't know, just my opinion, sorry Bruce, I think we should have them just to show the commissioners what they were and. And see if that's, I I don't know, unless you have a different thought.
I don't know, it just got to the point where I didn't think it was that productive, Nick.
I I know, I realize that.
No, it was uh, it was more. I I just wonder if maybe having that, having somebody from the agency come to a work meeting. As needed and and have some discussion there, I think it'd be, might be more productive than having a, having an official meeting with. With the agenda, it got to the point where the agenda was the same every time we met. You know, and just, I don't know.
Yeah, as as I mentioned, that was uh an issue we had with it, we wanna be involved as a county early. In the planning processes for various projects, so.
Right.
We can't, we don't wanna wait for two months and then find out, well, that's already done, we're already past this point, so. But but I think with a new manager in in the local B L M office, uh we got kind of a new start there, so to speak. Uh with the Forest Service, maybe we can emphasize for those agency representatives to attend these meetings. On a more regular basis as, as things come up, that need the county's attention.
Yeah.
All right, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your reports and comments and. We will go ahead and uh commence with the commission meet. As indicated.
Well, we can't, we can't start the commission meeting early, so so either we have to take a break or if there's other things that you. Um wanna discuss in the meeting now, we can, but uh. Yeah, we can't start early, so.
There it goes again. What is it, ten o'clock?
Yeah.
Break?
We can take a break.
Early to lunch?
Light to breakfast.
Light to breakfast. Light to breakfast. Very, very early uh supper.
Are you buying, Willie?
Um. The county is right here, so we'll leave it up to Kelly.
If you can find breakfast.
To who? To the county? Will we uh?
No.
I'll come right back.
I'm an interpreter for Mr. Ryan. Heard this?
I think Natalie has one.
Natalie, are you gonna be the interpreter for?
No. I went skiing and I got snowed on. Cheese, honey, cheese. Um let me tell you, I thought it was. Was Tim Benali. Tim Benali?
Yeah, I was in a library, I have an meeting, I have an meeting in the library.
Tim Benali. For the um bluff meeting. And then there's Tim, so it was supposed to be out of Tim's mind and out of his back, but that's something that was canceled.
Yeah. I didn't, I didn't expect it.
So Tim Benali offered to do it, um and he were.